...to order, it is Tuesday, February the seventh. Let the record show that we commence this meeting at seven P. M. I would ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Of President Klein.
Here.
Sophie O'Brien-Bergwin.
Here.
Ortner.
Here.
Stanford.
Here.
Thomas is absent. Wicken.
Here.
And Thelma.
Here.
Thank you. It's this point of the meeting when we ask anybody who has any comments that they would like to make to the board. This is the time to do it. Deb, anything you'd like to share with us?
Yes, I was just wondering if anyone came forward after the article in the paper about the centennial.
Other than you?
I'm just inquiring.
Okay. I will be addressing that during the president's comments. That's in, you'll know, if you look down the agenda, that's in seven A, sub one, Centennial Celebration. I'll be talking about that. Thank you. All right. You know, I skipped right over.
You did.
All right, let's back up to item number two. Review and approve the minutes in the regular board meeting of February seventh.
I'll move to approve, George.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Darrell. Any discussion, any suggested corrections? All in favor of accepting the minutes as printed, please indicate by saying aye.
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 By the same side. All right. Now we're back on target here. The Finance Committee did take a look at the revised Village organizational chart, and did have a couple recommendations. And if you take a look at your, the document on the org chart, the recommendations were to cross out the box or delete the box that says Public Works, the box that says Finance and Administration, and the box that says Public Safety. I hope you've had a chance to look this over, and especially to read the notes that are at the bottom of the page. Any questions, any comments? Perhaps what I ought to do is ask for a motion to accept it with the revisions, and then we can talk about it.
I'll move, George.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Darrell. All right.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Committees and commissions, public welfare's not on there. Or is that under city committees, but are not a city?
I guess we don't have one anymore.
I missed it.
Okay. So did I. You know, it's funny, when you're looking at something, unless you're involved with it, it's hard to see what's not there. And so, thank you. So we need that in public welfare. And that'll be in this, in this box. Thank you, Colleen. Anything else we missed?
I don't know if we have enough time to get that into that detail, George.
Thank you, Mark. All right.
Just on the chart, Mark. Okay.
Darrell, Mark, you accept the addition of the public welfare-
Will do.
-to that box? Okay. Take that as an affirmative. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the new Village of North Hudson organizational chart, please indicate by saying aye.
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 By the same side. Next, we have an ordinance creating the position of Administrator. And this is ordinance four dash twenty twelve. In front of you on the desk, there's a revised version. There were a couple changes that our attorney had recommended changing. I'll throw this open. Terry, did you want to just talk about it a little bit? We talked about it at Finance, and recognize that the changes that you made, or recommendations that you made, were pretty much semantics.
Yeah, they were non-substantive, George. There's really not much to, it was more, more for clarity and readability.
Okay. That's, that is what we said during Finance, but I wanted to hear it from you.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion, we can continue some discussion.
I'll move, George, approve ordinance number zero four dash twenty twelve.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Colleen. All right. This came about because we discovered that we didn't have anything relating to the position of Administrator. And Gloria put this together. On the first page, you'll notice that Village Administrator is underlined, as an addition. And then the complete dissertation on what that office is all about is all underlined on the next two pages. Assuming that you got a chance to read it over. And it has passed the, the eye, passed through the eyes of our attorney, so. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing done? This is an ordinance, so let's do a roll call. Mr. Wicken, would you like to start us off this evening?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
The next ordinance that we have here, ordinance five dash twenty twelve. Mark, did you say you would read this?
What would you like me to read?
Of the next ordinance? In other words, make a motion.
Well, I'll move to dash, is it zero five twenty twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think this one's gonna need a reading.
Okay.
This is an ordinance amending the municipal code for the Village of North Hudson. Take it away.
Will do. Whereas, you, the first paragraph two?
Yeah.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of North Hudson, Hudson wishes to amend Chapter Two, Administration, comma, Article Five, Finance and Taxation, comma, Division One, period. Generally, Section Two dash three oh two, period. Direct legislation capital project, comma, of the Village of North Hudson Municipal Code. Parentheses, delete language is struck through, created language is underlined. Now, therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Village of North Hudson does ordain as follows. Section Two dash three oh two, direct legislation capital project. Prior to the start of any physical construction of any municipality financed, herein in whole or in part, project requiring a village capital expenditure of nine hundred thousand dollars or more, comma, and would result in an increase in real property taxes, underlined, the Village Board shall submit to the electorate a binding referendum for approval of the project, period. Failure of the binding referendum shall preclude the village from proceeding with the project, period. Capital expenditures for maintenance, comma, repair or replacement of existing utilities or infrastructure, comma, or pursuant to existing contractual obligations or legal mandates shall be exempt from this section. That last sentence was underlined. The wording of any referendum shall provide the specific purpose, comma, location, and cost of the project. Nothing in this provision shall be construed to preclude the village from exercising its role in the planning or design of such publicly financed projects.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is the purpose of the underlining strictly so that we will know what has been changed?
That's the new language. That's the new language.
But after, after tonight, when this is sent out for publication, those lines disappear.
Right.
Okay, thank you. The only reason I ask is because nine hundred thousand was not underlined.
No, but it replaces what was stricken-
Yes.
-of the one fifty.
Okay. Is any further discussion? Or any discussion on this? We've talked about this the last couple meetings, I believe, and so this is why this is up before you now. Hearing done?
I'm curious why the, I mean, you go from a hundred and fifty thousand, which wasn't read, into the, you know, it's being stricken to nine hundred thousand. I don't understand what, I mean, you, you says capital expenditure for maintenance, repair. That isn't, you know, that's exempt. What is, what kind of projects does this, would this include?
The issue here has to do with, as we've talked about in the past, with, let's say, a street repair.
Yeah.
Until now, until, if this passes, let's say it didn't pass. What we've been saddled with in the past is we had to talk to our, we had to talk to Cedar Corp. And says, okay, how much can you pave? How much street can you repair for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? That's not the way we, that, that's costly. It's an expensive way to try to operate. We have a situation over in the shopyards, for example, that we know that that infrastructure needs to be replaced, and it's gonna cost more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm using this only as an example. Prior to making these changes, we did review every other municipality in the state of Wisconsin that has an ordinance similar to this. And what we discovered was, I think Gloria, there were-
One or two that's under a million.
Yeah. There's only a couple that are under a million dollars. So we wanted to keep ours under a million, but still make it such that we could operate the village, and that folks would have faith in the Board of Trustees operating in their best interest to make sure that the jobs get done efficiently and economically. A good example of this was how we had to break up the, some of the paving that was done over in St. Croix Station, so that we would satisfy the requirement. It would have been a lot more, a lot, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but it would have been cheaper had we been able to do the whole project at once. But instead, because we had to break it up, it became more costly. We'd like to avoid that in the future.
No, I was just curious. I mean, obviously, there was a board that had a reason for set, putting this in place years past. I mean, and, you know, to go up by, what, by multiple six, you know, I mean, I just, I was just curious is, because you've got the disclaimers exempt from the section for doing regular projects. I was just wondering what kind of projects it would be. I mean, I understand the saving the money, but I mean, I don't understand what projects aren't included by the capital expenditures, the exemption that you have written into the paragraph.
Say that we had another, which we don't, Village Hall to build. That, and it would be over nine hundred thousand, and it would affect the tax base, so-
Which would affect fact, and affects the taxpayers.
Right.
Which is why they should have a voice in this, you know, I mean, because-
So that's, it would. They, we would have to go to referendum to do that.
I think this question has to do with this, the line, or the sentence that's underlined, capital expenditures for maintenance.
Anything new, I think, is what it would be, Stan, as opposed to an existing road or something like that.
So, all right, anything new? That's the question is, and what would be new, why we couldn't run it through a referendum? If we're doing maintenance and different stuff like that, I mean, that's what we should be budgeting for. I mean, I don't, I'm confused at the necessity to raise this without allowing the voters to vote on it, on it, something that'll affect their taxes.
Okay. I don't have an answer for you, except to say that the, the board actually had the option of considering just eliminating it altogether, which is legal to do after two years. And so what we decided to do is actually keep it as a safeguard for the future. And if a future board wants the changes to a number other than nine hundred thousand, they are, they can do that.
And that's, this is just my question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, vote. We'll start with you this time, Dan.
Yes.
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 No.
Motion passed. New business from the board is item number seven, and the first thing that you see on there is Centennial Celebration. Deb, yes? An update on the, on the Centennial Celebration. I would like to thank, first of all, thank the Hudson Star Observer, Doug, for having something in the paper recently, where we are looking for people to volunteer, to come out and help out. And Deb Copeland, I'd like to thank you very much for throwing your hat in the ring to assist with this. Hope we can get Wally to help as well. What do you think?
Um, probably not.
Probably not. All right, all right. We do have a couple other names on here, and if they were here, I would recognize them. We have one member who is on the list, is gonna go to the Neighborhood Watch Group and spread the word at North Hudson Elementary to see if anyone is interested in serving on the committee. Be great to see if a few more people will sign up. I have already hired a band. That's an old song from the turn of the century. Back in the, hired a band, okay. And my friend who is organizing this said, ah, he says, and my wife is even gonna play it. I'm gonna get her to play some Scott Joplin, do a little ragtime, I think it's gonna be great. So we do have some enthusiasm starting. But it's not that much further away, and I would hope that some more people would step forward, let Becky know that we're into, we wanna, we wanna do something simple. Ice cream pie, you know, the stuff that we might have seen back around nineteen twelve. While we're on that topic, you might see right in front of me, as I look up at the monitor, I can see that you can see that the North Hudson, Wisconsin Centennial cookbooks have arrived. And notice I have mine on its, on the stand that it comes with. So right inside this book, here's the stand, so that you folks who like to cook and experiment with some new recipes, there they are. Not only is it a cookbook, we also have pictures in this book. It's kind of fun. I've thumbed through mine, notice I have a few copies, and I realized I gotta get one more. And Becky tells me that there are some more available. So if you'd like another, if you'd like another book, or you haven't gotten yours yet, Becky, you have them here?
Yes, they're available here at the Village Hall. You can also get them at Hudson Socks, and the cost is twenty-four dollars.
Thank you very much. I have something else. Also, I'm gonna hold this up, make sure that you can see it. We got a really cute, absolutely adorable thank you card. And this is from the children at Saint Patrick's School. And it says, Village of North Hudson, you shine for us. And inside, it has, all the children have, all the children have signed it. It says, thank you for supporting Saint Patrick's School and the Hudson Community. And it's Mrs. Dumont's first grade. Becky, did you have anything, you wanna say anything else about it?
No, I just believe that the first grade class was doing a unit on local government, and so they just made a card and recognized the village, and I believe also the city and the towns of Hudson.
That's adorable. Thank you. The last thing that I'd like to share with the public is that the, the Bridge event that took place on Saturday morning, and this, it's, I liked that it was the Bridge Event, it was called. And this was, this was at the Water Street Inn Saturday morning. You may have seen it, the Hudson Star Observer covered it in their website. And it was a very nice affair at the Water Street Inn in Stillwater. Speakers were Senator Klobuchar, Representative Duffy, let's see, Representative Bachmann, and our own Darrell Stanford, who ended, he, he wrapped up this, this, the comments, the speeches. And I think we were, I was very proud of him. It was a very nice speech, and it was such a pleasure to see government working together. Darrell, thank you very much. Anything that you'd like to say about the affair? I hope that you will hold on to and perhaps frame on a piece of red velvet, the souvenir that you were given on the tour of the bridge. Many, those of us sitting in the audience were wondering what Darrell was handling. What's he got there? And then finally, he shared it with us. It was a, it was a piece about this big around of the bridge, a very rusty disc. I don't know where it came from.
It was just laying on the bridge.
It was laying on the bridge, which makes me wonder how many similar pieces were laying under the bridge that vibrated off as we drove over the bridge. So most of us are fairly excited about that. And was it gonna be about a year from now when they'll start, a little more than a year, when they start actually digging?
Probably spring of twenty fourteen.
All right. Can't wait. I'm done.
Okay.
Gloria, your turn. You got anything?
Well, just quickly, I'd like to thank the board and the residents of North Hudson. I've served now for eight years here, and I've enjoyed my time and appreciate the support.
You're making me nervous here, you know, when you start talking about it.
No, you're not getting rid of it that easy.
You know, two more years, then maybe they'll give you a pin.
Yeah, there you go.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Becky?
Uh, thank you. The only item I have is a request that the Village Board consider moving the April third Village Board meeting to March twenty seventh. There will be a spring election held on April third, which would conflict with the regularly scheduled Village Board and Finance Committee meetings.
Do we need a, do you-
Typically, we have a motion to-
Yeah, do we have an issue statement? Otherwise, we'll just make the motion.
There isn't an issue statement. Just what it says on the agenda, basically.
All right, somebody wanna make the motion?
I'll move.
Where are you gonna move?
Wouldn't we actually move it to April twenty seventh, not March twenty seventh?
No.
Typically, we move it to the week before-
You're moving it forward?
Because we will have a reorganization meeting that'll be taking place on April seventeenth after the election.
Okay.
Mark, did you?
I'll move, move March twenty seventh.
You?
Second.
And you, Colleen? Any discussion? Any problem with that?
I won't be able to attend, so I'm gonna check me out.
Okay. All right, this, Darrell, we do this every year. It's just, it's just before the election, rather than, and then we have the reorg meeting later in April. All right, all in favor of moving, moving the April meeting to March twenty seventh, indicate by saying aye.
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 By the same side?
No.
Excuse me just a second. Looks to me like the plan commission did not meet, is that correct? Personnel and Finance, we've got some claims that are before you. Two sets of claims.
Need a motion to pay our bills.
Mr. President, I move approval of the non-recurring claims in the amount of, I can find it, about sixteen hundred dollars. There it is. One thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents, which are the non-recurring claims from the year end twenty eleven, and we received them in February.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All right, Stan, we're gonna start with you this time?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. And then we have a second set of claims.
Sir, I'll move to approve the two thousand twelve non-recurring claims received in February of two thousand twelve, totaling fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay, Dan, we'll start with you this time?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Thank you very much. We had, Gloria and I had a sit-down with the, just, give you a topic first. The results of the Memorandum of Understanding letter. And you should have a copy of the email that was sent by Al Bits. Al is the WPPA Business Agent for the Union, the Police Department Union. We did have a meeting, Gloria and I met with Al and with Kyle, one of our officers, who is the, what's his title? President? Union President. And I'll let you read that. Basically, it says, uh, no, thank you. You need to say anything else about that, Gloria? You have any questions? Next one we have is the year-end financial report that was on your desk. All right, you wanna just do a quick recap? They got both of these documents, right?
Yes. In front of you, you should have found a document heading, headed, two thousand and eleven estimated year-end report. Basically, it's letting you know that we ended in a favorable position the end of two thousand and eleven. Reasons being special assessment payoffs, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenue, and inter-fund transfers was on the revenue side. Those are things that are not something that we can count on recurring, or we have way of, of anticipating. The second paragraph explains where part of the surplus came from, the underages of the, the expense categories. Even though there were some that were over budget, overall, we ended up favorably in that section also. And so at the middle of the page, in the box, you'll see that I started with two thousand and ten's ending balance, audited Indian, ending balance of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight, four eighty-eight, with the anticipated eighty-four thousand, two nineteen. And then there's some recommended, and I'm not asking for approval at this time, monies to be reserved or set aside or used towards the budget. And that would give us an ending balance of four hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty. If you take that, divide it by the general fund budgeted expenditures, you'll come up with a percentage of twenty-seven percent, which is in the target of the policy that the board had recommended that we stay within. And then attached to that is a readout that gives you a little bit more detail. It gives you the beginning fund balances for each one of the, the general fund, the sewer maintenance fund, the park board fund. And then you'll also notice that the two oh three and the two oh four funds have been zeroed out. They will, they were sent over to the general fund, and that was part of that reserve for PD education, because those grants were specified for those purposes. And this will probably be the last time you'll see the Village Hall Project Fund, because that will fall off next, next year, ten. And the last-
All right, go back to, you said that's gonna fall off?
Yeah, there, it won't be here, because it'll all be zeros.
You mean that we paid it off?
No. It means that we don't have any activity in it.
Thought it'd be fun to hear her say, yeah, it's gonna be paid off.
Oh, yeah, nice. And then you have the capital project fund, which had the Tenth Street in the prior years, and last year, it was St. Croix Station project. And so that gives you an idea, this is not an audited statement, but it's my projection. The auditor will be here in April. And so at that point, if there's a, you'll, well, you'll get your, your binder, but if there's a big change, I'll let you know, but I don't anticipate it.
Thank you. The monies that are being collected from the, any of the street projects, do we need to make a, do we need an issue statement regarding paying, paying that into the loan?
Bringing down the loan.
Bringing down the principal?
Uh, we, we can do that.
What that'll be good for is at least then the board will know how we're paying it down and give approval to either pay it down or add it to our reserve.
It is, we did refinance all of those loans into one.
Right.
So it is also in with some others, projects. And when we did our, we do our payments to that loan, in a sense, we are using that fund, those monies to pay that down.
Okay.
But it would help to do it quicker.
Yes.
And if, that's actually what I, I was going to recommend for next month.
Very good. For then, March twenty seventh?
Well, yeah.
If you wanna wait till May, that's- If you wanna wait till May, that's-
I might do that.
We got, we have such a good deal on, I know it sounds strange, we had a good deal on the money, on the percentage, and it may be that the Board or at your recommendation may say, well, we have other things that we could use that for. So, we'll look at the numbers and try to make intelligent decisions. Thank you, Gloria. Anything else? Uh, next thing on the agenda is Public Works. We turn it over to you, Mr. Stanford.
We do have one item rolling down the, uh, the hill toward us. We will be discussing it at Public Works this month, and that is some mandates coming at us with respect to street signs, which has the potential to cost us a, a fair amount of money. So, there may be, uh, some information coming later. We'll be discussing that. I don't think it makes any of us terribly happy. Next item, uh, however, is one that can save us some money, and that is that we did have, uh, Mr. Swabs from, uh, Wisconsin Energy, Focus on Energy, uh, do some energy audit work in the village, and as a result, we are recommending, and I will so move for approval by this Board, and this did go through Public Works and Finance. I would move to recommend that the Village Board, uh, entertain Scott Free Electric to replace six existing light fixtures at the Public Works Garage with five four-lamp T-five fluorescent fixtures and one four-lamp T-eight fluorescent fixtures, fixture, and it would be singular, at a cost not to exceed one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Exactly.
And as a matter of discussion then, uh, following that second, I would indicate that based on rebates that we will get back from Focus on Energy and the lower, uh, usage of the light fixtures themselves, we're looking at a payback for the total expenditure of approximately three years, uh, and potentially less. So it's a fairly rapid payback on the expenditure.
Thank you, Darrell. Now's your time, if you wanna ask that question, Dan.
Well, I just got a question. I'm very familiar with the Focus on Energy. I don't understand, and I'm sure it's something simple, but I don't understand, if we don't own this building, why are we putting the money into it? We're renting this building.
Uh, yes, but we're the ones that are paying the utility costs and are gonna get the benefit of the reduction, and we get the rebate.
Has anything been worked out with Gary?
According to current lease and the mail that we have at the M S Garage, uh, lease indicates in it that any upgrades or, upgrades or changes to the building will be solely under the responsibility of the M S Garage.
That's what I need to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions, Darrell? Okay, Stan, you wanna start us off with a yes or no on the motion?
I would, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Public Works, or, excuse me, Public Safety, next. And the Chairman of Public Works, Public Safety is not here tonight, but the Chief has a presentation that he would like to share with us.
On behalf of the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I guess. Uh, just a few things, and I'll make them brief, just trying to bring attention to, uh, a number of items that are, I guess, initiatives that are changing within the Police Department. But the first, uh, comes from the Public Safety Committee meeting in February. That, you'll see in the Board packets, is the ten-year study. It's a four-page document, uh, two of which can sit side by side and read across. The other two, really appendices, that give some information that might supplement questions that you have within that document. I don't plan on presenting anything on that document this evening, unless there are items from the Board that they would like to see added to that study that aren't in there. Um, but really, it's a ten-year look back at the Police Department and items such as the average stops, the number of officers, uh, traffic stops, warnings, all of those types of items, case load. And we talked a little bit about the, I guess, the connection between some of those line items and how they impact each other in the Public Safety Committee meeting, but really, there's nothing depicted on the study in and of itself, because it's, it's really raw data that's there for people to take a look at and make some assumptions, uh, and to ask some questions. So, uh, I'll leave that with you to take a look at, if, at the next Board meeting or at future Board meetings, if it's something you'd like me to pull out and talk about. I'm more than happy to. I know the Finance Committee with the Police Department staffing levels, I thought this might be, also be helpful for them to take a look at and, and utilize in, in some of those discussions. So, just to let you know that that's in there and to pay special attention to it. The other are some initiatives that we're bringing forward, and George probably didn't coin the term, but used the term in a, in an email that he sent to me of openness, and really, that's, that describes very well what I'm trying to do with some of our online or our social media contacts for the Police Department. In some of the, the past conversations that I've been having, there are a few things that came up, uh, I guess, came to my attention. One is that George, uh, seems to get a lot of calls from citizens that have kind of conversations about things that they, uh, are, you know, either in favor of or, or have some questions about with the Police Department, or, I guess, short of a complaint, but more of concerns. And so, one of the things that we've done on our website, and I wanted to, to point it out, 'cause it's, um, it's basically a template website that we don't have a ton of, uh, changes that we can do to it without upgrading. So I think Becky had mentioned, the pictures that are there, uh, may or may not be from North Hudson, but in order to upgrade them, there, there may be some additional costs. So we're gonna stick with what we've got now. But utilizing those parameters, to get to the Police Department, uh, section, you have to go under Village Government Services, and there's the North Hudson Police Department. And then, if my computer, there we go, uh, made a couple of changes in here. Again, the template is pretty strict, it doesn't allow for a lot of pomp and circumstance. So, if you scroll down a bit, uh, you'll see that there is an email that I've added for myself. So if there are questions, people can contact me directly via email, because most people nowadays are online and connected through technology. So that's, a lot of times, the easiest way. I don't, I have no problems with phone calls or personal visits, but this seems to be the most convenient for people. So, I offer to please email me with any concerns that you have. If you fall down a, a little bit more, we've added now, uh, the top line there is filing a citizen complaint. Just wanna click on that for you. If there are complaints, if there's people that have issues with officers that are making stops or contacts, and they feel like something has gone wrong that they would like to see corrected, or that, uh, uh, policy has been violated within the, the village, I'd like them to, to go to the website. Uh, they can click on the Citizen Complaints section. Two thousand and seven, this Board, or a lot of the members of this Board, passed a citizen complaint policy. And, uh, excerpts, excerpts from that policy are here. And then, uh, at the very bottom of the page, and I'll try not to scroll too fast to make everyone dizzy, at the bottom of the page are two downloadable forms. Now, this first form is a citizen complaint form, it's an MS Word document. It is a fillable, it gives you boxes that you fill in and go through. Unfortunately, because it's made with Microsoft Word two thousand and seven, uh, not everybody is able to open it, so I'm working on getting that to be function, or functional. But, in lieu of that, if you can't open that document, uh, right below it is a PDF form that'll pop up into a new window. And, uh, as it loads, this is a printable form, and you just go ahead, print it out, fill in all the information that's requested, and then, a little bit further down here are all the blank lines for you to give your narrative on whatever the, uh, the issue is that you're there to complain about. And then, again, looking back at that policy, it does describe what the process is and what the steps that would be taken, uh, for you as a complainant, and also, uh, the fact that the disposition of that complaint will be reported back to you within a, a certain amount of time. So getting off the Complaints section and getting back into, uh, some of the more interesting things, I've added two other sections and, and, uh, I guess, keep, keep coming back, because there's a lot of things that we're trying to bring up. But, uh, the, the newest section that we have, that I added today, is the Wisconsin Vine System. We talked a little bit about it at a previous Board meeting, but that is really people's connection, is a victim of a crime to, uh, getting status on someone that was arrested as a victor, or as a perpetrator or suspect in that crime. If you're the victim of domestic abuse, and, uh, the person, uh, is arrested and taken to jail, that person can now, that victim can now click on this link and go in and fill in all their personal information, um, with a phone number and email address, and those types of things to be, to be notified when that subject is released from custody. Um, the St. Croix County Jail holds this database or all this information. It's all through a statewide, uh, Wisconsin Vine system, and it's, uh, it, it works very well. So once that person is released, notification will go out via email, via text message, via, uh, phone call to you to let you know that that person has been released, or there's been a change in status. If that person then gets transferred to Polk County, uh, they'll notify you that, you know, for some reason, maybe they had a warrant out of Polk County, we arrest them here for a, a different charge. Once they're released from that custody to a different custody, it will notify you of that change. So, very nice for victims to be able to feel a little bit more comfortable and a little more safe that someone's in custody and when that change in, in custody status comes into play. And then, uh, another one of the latest is that, uh, North Hudson PD is now on Facebook. Uh, we decided to hit social media. Uh, Marty Jensen and I sat through a four-hour presentation on social, social media at the Wisconsin Chiefs Association Conference, uh, found it to be overwhelming, but something that we definitely want to try to, to get into, to open up, uh, I guess, a dialogue with our citizens on concerns that they might have. Really, the, the brunt of the conversation during that was that the social media sites are a great way to get out information in a, in a very kind of nonchalant way, just putting information up there so for people can, can capture it whenever they want, but also to get feedback. Um, a lot of departments, I think, have closed off, that they, that people can't comment on their site. Uh, but this, this particular presenter said, allow people to comment, because once people feel like they have a voice in the department, it's going to open up that conversation. And really, they've found that they've got tips, they've got information that's come forward that's been very beneficial to try to, uh, help neighborhoods and also to solve some crimes. So, we've opened that up. I do have, our site is still under construction to some extent, uh, but we have posted a few things on there. Uh, I posted on there that we added information to our website about how to file a citizen complaint. And then our very first post, when we opened, uh, opened the site in February, was that we're on Facebook, we're, welcome you to share your issues and post to anything, and we'll post things related to public safety, or, um, one of the examples would be George and I stood out on Helen Street when the garbage truck hit the electrical pole. Uh, from my cellphone, I could put in there, you know, power's gonna be out for a short period of time, onto that website and, uh, and be able to update people so that they could go and find out information at that location. Now, it's not really open to those people that aren't on Facebook, so we're trying to find other avenues that we can get that information out, but at least it's one, one stop that people can go to find out more information about the Police Department. We're meeting, Marty Jensen and I are meeting with, uh, Mike Heaton on Friday to put together an article, uh, to describe this in, in more detail, but I wanted at least to present it to the Board tonight and expect that it'll be an upcoming, uh, version of the Hudson Star Observer. And I think that was all that has been added. We do have our medical collection information on here for the free and anonymous drop-off and animal control and vehicle registration. Again, this is in a site that I'm gonna try to continue to update, uh, with, with more information. Questions on any of that?
Could you go back to the very beginning and show them once again how to get to the Police Department?
I can.
Okay.
So from the home website, which is www.northhudsonvillage.org, you would click on Village Government Services, which does include General Government, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and the Court, and then click on North Hudson Police Department, and all the information is there. Our hours, our phone numbers. Anything, oh, I'm sorry.
I would suggest that, rather than just North Hudson Complaints, I would say Complaints and Attaboy is our way to go, is there something like that? Because you guys don't get a lot of the credit in, rather than just have a, a negative thing for people. I mean, you should be able to say, hey, you guys did a great job, you know, I mean, you get beat up a lot. But I think that, uh, you know, I mean, you know, what we did good, what we did bad, type of thing, you know, so that-
I like it.
You got something that, uh, you know, for people with positive comments in there, too.
Yeah, absolutely, I can definitely add that. I like that idea. We don't get a lot of those, you're right, so it would be nice to-
Well, it gives them an opportunity. It's like, oh, crap, I can only whine and complain, you know? It's like, how about, hey, you did a great job, thank you. I mean, you know, I mean, you, you know, or you've been responded to bee stings, or, you know, I mean, we save people's lives, you know? That'd be a nice place to say, have something other than just a constant, you know, sounding board of, of the stuff you did bad. I think that's a good idea.
Great. Other suggestions?
And in the meantime, they can use Facebook.
There you go.
Danger, danger.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Thank you very much, Mark. Item number twelve on the agenda, public welfare.
Didn't meet, George.
Didn't meet! Item number thirteen is the Park Board Committee, uh-
We didn't meet either. We did, we did, we're not here this month. We didn't have much to say.
Won't be a record. No, it won't. Well, we've, we've set that bar very high. Does anybody else have anything they would like to share with the Board and the public?
No. Adjourn it.
Then, Mr. Zap, is there something you'd like to say?
We'll do adjourn.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that the meeting was adjourned at seven forty-nine. Thank you very much.
Good, George.